For 117 Trumper Avenue, come up please. Okay, Mary's not feeling well. Thank you for showing up for that. Yes. Thank you for remembering. No, we added them to the agenda for 117 Trumper Avenue from last meeting.
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. We'll let them explain it to. It was from last meeting. Just, we're gonna let Mary sign the, before she leaves. Was that storage, remember it was the storage facility you talked about, you know, that you were interested in? Yeah, with the bronze?
Yeah.
You found, just the last page. Because you won't be voting on the others then, so. Okay, thank you. All right, let me just. Let me. Let me make, let me make sure, Mary. Okay. Do we need to sign these? Dan, Mary, hold on one second. There's, there's not a place for the signature, Eric. Is Dan out there? Dan? We just noticed the signature, the signature page just has a place to mark "I," "I" or "no," not for signature. Doesn't it need signature, the board members?
I believe that's the same signature page we used before, but I would just check and then just-
Sign, Mary, I'm sorry.
Sign in the-
Right over on the side, yeah. Here's a pen. Just sign it right next to the "no," you know, to the side. Feel better. Okay, thank you. Okay. 117 Trumper Avenue. It was a storage shed, right? Why don't you just remind everybody what's going on with that?
Yes, it's a steel building for storage of rubber molds, pallet racking pallets, and storage of rubber molds for production for us. We're a fine art casting facility where we do bronze casting for artists.
So it's about 1,200 square feet, my notes said, and the actual side setback will be eight feet, and the back will be 12 feet?
That's correct. Yeah.
And it requires, and the zoning lot in bulk requirement, 50 feet, front, side, and rear.
Right.
Which goes back to my original statement about something being outdated, like the zoning code. So we had a fire inspection, everything passed.
Right.
You ready to start this up? You just need the area variance?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Ari? Joe? Brian? Brian wants to come over and watch the process, okay?
Yep, sure.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Anytime.
I used to work for Talos.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
We did too.
So did we.
Yeah. Right, right.
Okay. Owen?
Uh, no questions.
By the way, you're a voting member now because Mary left, so.
Exciting.
I'm sorry.
Andrew Farmer.
Vincent DiDonato.
Okay, the board hears all the applicants, and then at the end of the last applicant, we discuss them and we vote, so you may stay if you want to hear the outcome of our discussion, or you can wait, or you can wait and hear it, or you can leave and a letter will be sent to you regarding the decision. It's up to you.
Would we be able to get in touch with the building inspector?
Yeah, Mr. Kitchen will know what the outcome of the vote is.
Okay. Sounds good, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next is owner Joshua Rechnitz, and the applicant Barry Turner, 67 Chapel Street, Zone RRR, Ward 9. You here? Okay. How do you say your name? Please say your name and address. Okay, that's R-E-C-H-N-I-T-Z. He's the owner.
Okay.
Did you get all that, Lauren? Okay. All right, we have 67 Chapel. The applicant is seeking an area variance from 405-9C, parentheses, 8, for the purposes of erecting an eight-foot wired deer fence on three sides of the property. The zoning requires four feet in the front, six and a half rear and side max, and you're gonna be putting up eight feet, but it will be a see-through fence, as I understand it?
Yes, it'll be a wire mesh see-through fence.
I, I went up Chapel Street. I hadn't really never been up there. That's quite a building.
I hadn't either, until about November.
You know the history of that, don't you?
I don't know much about it, actually.
That was one of Father Devine's homes.
Oh, I think somebody mentioned that, yeah.
With the peace movement, peace mission in the early 1900s.
I remember my grandfather talked about him.
That was one of his houses.
Mm-hmm. It's quite an imposing structure.
So you're gonna be doing the work?
Um, I'm a gardener. I've worked with Josh before on some other projects, and we are gonna be hiring, we have a guy from Bloomington who's gonna actually erect the fence for us.
Okay. So you work for the owner?
Yes.
Okay. It looked like, correct me if I'm wrong, it looked like about 1,100 square, 1,100 linear feet of fencing?
That approximately, yeah.
That's a lot of fencing.
It's a lot of fencing. Well, the whole, the whole property is, I think, four, almost four, over four acres, so, yeah. And we're gonna be going down through the woods and around, so it can't be seen.
And that's to protect, you're gonna be putting gardens in?
Correct. Yeah.
Deer will go after it, no doubt. All right, have any questions, Owen?
You know, I run down Chapel Street almost every weekend.
Uh-huh.
It's to get to, to get to South Wall. It's a, it's a great run. The fence, again, is, it's not gonna be opaque, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's my main concern. Thank you.
I think in the, in our application, we gave you some pictures. I don't know if you guys have that. Yeah, there's a, there it is. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Anything else? Owen? Brian?
So just a couple of questions about the fence. It's, it's a black mesh, I'm assuming? And the posts are proposed to be natural or?
Metal.
Metal. Okay. That's great. I mean, it's essentially invisible.
Quite a house. I mean, it sits, it sits back too, so there aren't any, aren't many neighbors around.
No.
I saw a few little cottages, I don't know, probably was part of the state one time. They're private owners.
The one house in front actually was part of the original property, and they subdivided it off when somebody down the road sold it somewhere along the line. So the lady who lives there has, has her own property, yeah.
Yeah. Joe, any question?
No, I think there's no visual blockage there that's accessible.
It's gonna be mostly in wooded area, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ari?
Taking your word that deer can jump over a six or seven-foot fence.
I've seen it.
I, I'm not, yeah.
That's why the standard deer fence now is eight feet.
Yeah.
We actually had a deer fence, a similar deer fence request, I think, a few months ago.
Right.
And we learned a lot about deer and how high they can jump.
Pretty amazing.
It, it's stunning. We're dealing with it in a development that I'm involved with, and it's, I kept pushing. Eight, eight feet, and, yep. In fact, that's what it has to be to keep those little four-legged critters out of there.
And they'll do a lot of damage to gardens.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Turner, you heard me speak to the, the last applicant. We will discuss this at the end of our meeting.
Okay.
Vote on it. You're free to stay or leave and receive a letter, either way.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next applicant is owner Matthew Carlisle/Dorothy Hunt, 39-45 Van Duzen Street, Zone R2, Ward 4. Good evening. Could everyone please state their name and address for the record?
I'm Matthew Carlisle, 1 Locust Park, Catskill, New York. Owner.
Dorothy Hunt, 17 Johnston Avenue, Kingston, New York.
Okay, is your microphone on, the green light?
No.
Okay, please say it again.
Dorothy Hunt, 17 Johnston Avenue, Kingston, New York, and I'm also an owner.
My name is John Franco Pellegrini. I live at 35 Supreme Court in Sorgerdies, and I'm a real estate agent. It's Gian Franco Pellegrini. Sure. It's G.I.A.N.F.R.A.N.C.O. Pellegrini, P.E.L.L.E.G.R.I.
Thank you. Okay, the applicant is seeking a use variance from 405-12 to convert the landlord's space on the first floor into a studio apartment, creating a three-unit in an R2 zone. There are four gar, I drove by the building. There's four garages, so the two apartments each have two garages? Is that the way it was set up? That's unique.
Yes.
Yeah, that's unique. But bigger question, I saw four meters on the building. It's a two-family, and then a common area would be three meters. What is the fourth meter? What is that for?
We originally, when we set the building up, we were hoping to, we just put it in as like future-using. We were hoping to maybe do more of the building as time went on. I think there's actually space enough for five meters, but I think there are four being used. One is purely a landlord meter. It does like our outdoor lighting and stuff like that. One is attached to that landlord's space in question, and then the other two are for the upstairs apartments.
So how many current units are in the building right now?
The two upstairs apartments are three bedrooms each. So those are the two that are approved at this point. The downstairs unit, we built from the beginning as well, but for our own use.
What, what does that mean, our own use?
Well, I explained a little bit in the letter in the front, but I'll go over it. So across the street from our building is a commercial building, which was also owned by our partner, Tom Hunt, for his finishing business. So when we built the building, we built in a space that would accommodate like a break room and a bathroom for the workers over there, because there wasn't really a lot of space across the street. So that's what the space was being used for, as well as our, you know, our office and maintenance and whatnot, up until this point.
Is anyone living in it?
As of this year, there is, because of a little oversight of ours. As of last year, after Tom Hunt, our partner, passed, we were due for one of the annual inspections, and being we were no longer using the space, except for, for, we have like our video monitoring for the building, but as far as like any other use for it, we kind of didn't really have much use for it any longer. So I had the normal inspection done on the top apartments, and I also brought them into the bottom apartment to, because we thought we might be interested in renting it. So we obtained our operating permit for that year and rented it to a friend of ours who was kind of doing maintenance and trade for, for a living. Then, as we-
Does he pay rent?
Uh, no, he trades services right now. But we were planning on charging him rent, but we're also in the process of trying to sell the building, so we haven't, we haven't really finalized anything. Our ideal situation right now, after the passing of our partner, Tom Hunt, we put the building on the market in an effort to, you know, alleviate some stresses financially and just to the load of, you know, having extra properties. So the ideal scenario for us at this point is to sell it. But we're also, in, in the process of selling it, we, we actually have obtained a buyer, and we, you know, started digging into the, the legals or whatever, and it was re-brought to our attention that we don't have a C of O for this apartment, so we really shouldn't have rented it, most likely.
Did you have a building permit to renovate that area?
Um, we did it right from day one. Like, all the gas meters, electric meters, everything was in there. So we had set it up from, like I said-
But there must have been construction work that you did to-
Yes. Yeah, we built, we built the building, 100%.
So when you built the building, you built that as an apartment?
Correct. From, uh, well, as our, as our break room and landlord's space.
But a break room landlord's space is different than an apartment.
Right, like, we never, we never intended on, we, we didn't have intentions back then of renting it out, and we, we haven't up until this point. We use it for our own, our own use.
Okay, so you're basically here for a use variance for something that's already present?
Correct.
If I may say?
Correct.
All right, thank you for your honesty.
Yes, and we, we found out also by-
To legitimize what's already there.
Correct, and we've, we've already, you know, dug into it a little bit, and we don't have a C of O for that, so.
Well, you're gonna need more than a CEO. You're gonna need a building permit.
Right.
To correct all this.
Correct.
Because when you go to sell that property, if, I'm not a real estate, I have to defer to my colleague here, but all that kind of stuff gets cleared up by a, a search.
Yeah, that's why they're here.
Correct.
You can't sell it as a three-unit.
Right.
If it doesn't have, if it doesn't have a C of O for it.
Well, even if they sold it as a two-unit, wouldn't there be in the search some issues of having a-
Bring up some kind of issue one way or another.
Third apartment in it, I would think, doing a title search.
I have a, just-
Go ahead.
You, you have, okay. You have more?
No, I just wanted to set the foundation.
So I'm, I'm assuming when you set this up, you put a bathroom with a shower, I gather?
Correct.
In there? And you had a kitchen area?
Yeah, kind of like a kitchenette, yep.
Kitchenette? But it had a stove?
Yeah, stove, refrigerator, sink.
But the only reason for doing that was to use it as a break room?
Correct, and, yeah, in our own, our own use.
Um, I, I see that the building, I see that the building has five garage doors.
Correct.
Right? Are any of the garages being used for the tenants upstairs?
Yes.
Okay, so they each have a garage, the apartments upstairs?
Correct.
And the apartments upstairs are one, two, three-bedroom?
Three-bedroom.
They're three-bedroom apartments? Okay.
So they really have access to two, each of the tenants have two garages?
As one garage.
Well, if there's two apartments and there's four-
Right, there are two available to each. The fifth one, the fifth one is, we keep, and it's, it's actually open to the apartment in question.
Right. Right. But there are not, you're saying there's two garages for each apartment?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Which we, we need for parking, to accommodate the parking for the building.
Very unusual.
I missed, I missed the fifth one.
I have never seen this building. It's shocking.
No, I, I've seen it.
Okay, and, so, you know, the challenge with use variances, as you probably already know, when you read the criteria for the variances, is that somehow or another, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to convey to us why you can't get a reasonable return on this building in its current configuration.
Okay.
So that's the high bar to get over. I don't, I don't know what the economics of the building are, but it strikes me as it might be a, it might be a bit of a hurdle.
They have, what they have here is that the expenses total approximately $3,200, which I added them up monthly, it's 30, approximately $3,200. The amount of rent that's collected is $2,560 under two apartments.
Yeah, so, I mean, if, if that's what you're asking, yeah, we've been operating the building at a loss the whole time.
$600 a month.
Right. The, the benefit of the building to us was using it in conjunction with the building across the street, which we have already located for Mrs. Hunt, I mean, liquidated for Mrs. Hunt. So it no longer has, the building no longer has any kind of like economic, it doesn't make any sense to us any, anymore. We only made it work because-
Of the operation across the street.
Of the operation of the other building. So now, in the situation that we're in, where we've liquidated that building, now we're back to the point, like I mentioned, where we started wanting to make the building pay for itself, which is why I pursued starting to get a tenant in there. And then we also had put the building upon Tom's passage, we put the building on the market, both to, you know, honor his request to do so, and it just makes most sense for us to sell it anyway, because I recently got married and moved, I mean, I'm a longtime Kingston resident, but I just moved to Catskill, so I am also further away from the, the structure at this point, so.
And maintenance is not my strong point.
Yeah.
No, I, I get it. I, I just will say, though, in the current economic environment, and, you know, you certainly can talk to your own real estate agent, but, you know, a three-bedroom apartment with a two-car garage, the rents are a little light, but, it just appears to me, but, anyhow.
Possibly. I, I figure we might be like $50 each light on it, but other than that, I don't, I don't think. It's nothing, nothing significant. And it's mainly because we've had, the one tenant is very long-term, and we, she's great for us, and so like, we haven't been in a rush to raise it on her, and, you know, just to like maximize what the market can handle, but.
Well, nobody's gonna beat you up for providing affordable housing in Kingston.
Yeah, well, well, no, just, yeah, I know, but, I mean, yeah, like I said, I don't think we could get more than 50, which isn't gonna make a huge difference in the-
So the third apartment, what would, what would you ask, if you were owning it? What would you ask for the third apartment?
I would, I would ask, and hopefully, maybe Franco can agree or disagree with this. I, I'm estimating it would bring in maybe $800 for a-
$800?
For a, a studio apartment. I mean, it's kind of a unique apartment. Yeah, it's not, it's not like a, something you see every day, you know? It's like, it's kind of industrial in a way, because we, we didn't really design it as an apartment.
Did I read somewhere that you would, or look somewhere, there was a diagram that you would be using the one garage as part of the apartment?
Yeah.
I didn't, I thought I saw that.
Yeah.
So right now, right now, it's not part of the apartment, the garage?
Um, if you, I would say, I would say yes, it works best with that space in there. There's actually photos, if you guys got the appraisal portion of this?
Yeah.
There's, there's actual photos of the apartment in there.
Oh, there is?
Yep.
Does everybody have that? I understand.
And it's a long application.
What's that look like, Owen? The one that you just showed them?
The only pictures I have don't, don't, it shows what-
Owen, you have- Not the right apartment.
Appears the, appears to be the upstairs apartment.
Yeah, it's telling me it's the upstairs.
Yeah. I saw something with the garage, a drawing somewhere. But it was a drawing, it wasn't a picture. Okay, at this point, at this point, I'm gonna make a recommendation, and we can vote on it while the parties are here, but I'm a little uncomfortable, quite honestly, with the fact that there's no certificate of occupancy, there was never a building permit, and I really think we need to clean up the file with Mr. Knox and Mr. Kitchen and get an idea of what's what, maybe an inspection by Mr. Knox or Mr. Kitchen come back. I'm not real comfortable with approving something that's already in existence, because there's some cleanup that needs to be done in terms of paperwork, permits, et cetera. So, I mean, it would be my recommendation to table this until they, parties have had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Kitchen and Mr. Knox, and they may want to make an inspection, you had an inspection, but not by one of these gentlemen.
Correct.
And talk to them about a building permit, retroactive building permit, whatever, fire code.
I have a question regarding that.
Okay.
So it seems to me that they're here because they need a variance in order to get this, so it seems kind of reversing the process if we have them go ahead and get a permit and have them go in and inspect. You know, I think we either need to, we need to tell them that we believe that they can get a variance for this, and then they go get their permit and, and, and get it inspected and do all that stuff, which they would have to do anyway. So it seems like we could provide, aside from anything else, provided we have, if we feel we have the information we need to issue the variance, but the whole point is, we're gonna issue a variance, and then the building department is gonna do what they need to do to make sure that the apartment-
We could, we could give an area, a use variance contingent upon-
Right.
The securing of the proper permits and paperwork.
Right, which is kind of how it works anyway. They need a variance in order to get a building permit to actually put the third place in there legitimately, legally.
Except that it's already there.
Yeah, but it's there illegally, is my point.
Thank you.
No, I, I get it.
Yeah.
I mean-
I mean, there really isn't any work to be done on the apartment, is there?
No, but I, I definitely agree with what he's saying. That's, that was our train of thought as well, like, we, we kind of need an approval to go pursue the proper, like, permits.
Well, to get a building permit.
Permits and take it from there.
I don't know, I'd like to ask-
We could make you take the oven out, and then you would- We could make you take the oven out, and then you wouldn't have a kitchen.
Mr. Knox, would please give us some input here on what you would feel comfortable with?
Um, so, I, I, I'm certainly comfortable with you providing the variance, and then they can come to the building department for a building permit, and we'll go in and do some inspections and determine if the work was done according to code, and if, if so.
You give them a certificate of occupancy?
C of O, yes.
All right, so we're really left with that they reached the threshold necessary, the bar for, the bar for use variance is set very high, you have to show a financial hardship and that you can't make a reasonable return on your investment by doing with the building what is allowed under the zoning, and what's allowed under zoning is a two family. So you have to show us significantly that this is a financial hardship, I do know that the new owner's mortgage would go up another five hundred. I guess I want to ask the board, do we need any additional financial information, or is this sufficient?
Well, I can only say, based on the information provided, it's a pretty straightforward building, it's a two operating technically as a two family building. We know what the rents are, we know what the monthly heat is, I mean, and, and they've provided what their mortgage payments are. It's clearly operating at about a six hundred and forty dollar a month loss.
So you feel the numbers are reasonable, shown?
Yeah, the only thing, the only, the only thing about these numbers, even if, even if you were to bring the market, the rents to market rate, which I believe technically, three, which I believe would be likely to be somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred dollars a month, you're still operating at a loss. So.
Well, that's what we need your expertise for, Owen?
To Brian's point, given the current situation of the new owners. It would also be an additional expense of having to hire someone to maintain the property since they left the area. And that expense, I don't believe was in the application, but that would be another additional expense, which I think would have to be taken into consideration. If we were to say something like, well, just raise the rent, you know, I, so I do understand that they're sort of in a pickle.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like me to elaborate a little bit more on the, the potential new owner situation too?
No.
Okay.
We really need the expenses, that's, we're at the financial piece of this right now. What you're bringing in, what you're paying out, and whether it's a financial hardship, that's, that's really what we have to focus on. Ari?
Yeah, a, a point of clarification here, it's my understanding from listening to this and reviewing this, that you have a potential you have a potential sale of this property, and that as it stands right now, with having two legal units, the property presents a potential financially doesn't work out for the for the new owner.
Right, it would not go through the bank financing, he has it. When they did their preliminary inspections, they assumed it was a three, and did the financials based on that, and it doesn't, it doesn't support. With just the two apartments, it doesn't support the loan required for the building, so. Which. I mean, I would. And also, I mean. Part of our hardship is that we, we kind of do need to sell the building. And we, we had it on the market for, you know, a year, and this is our first legitimate offer. And he also, you know, went through the financials, and it comes up at a loss, of course, and I really feel like this situation of this sale would actually be most beneficial for everybody in the respect that the gentleman is gonna live in the building, you know, so he'll be able to care for it. This, his specific needs require that space for family members as well, like his daughter, I believe, so. You know, if, if we maintain, you know, keeping this deal together, and we do get through all these processes, I think the city and everybody would be in a much better place than the current situation it's in right now. You know, where the building can't support itself, I mean, whether, whether we end up stuck with it, or, or it moves on, I feel like it would be in everyone's best interest for it to to be able to generate at least, you know, a break even point, so that I mean, it's, it's a much better situation when the, the owner's living in there, because, you know, you can kind of contribute some of your own, you know, finances to it in hopes for, you know, a payoff in the future, or whatever, but.
We, we really need to work with the numbers right here, and the current, that's what we're looking at right now.
I just, I just want to get some clarification, because the, the sale of the building you know, generates some, some wrinkles in all of this, what, if you don't mind, what is the current mortgage on the, on the property?
For us, it's.
Yeah, but, no, but what's the amount? See, the, the, the challenge that I see here is that we have the owners of the building asking for a use variance, and it's not really our job to determine, you know, the, the, the hardship on the, on the part of the new owner. It's the current owner, and if you're selling the building, what numbers make sense is, is that without a variance, a use variance, can you sell the building and make a reasonable rate of return? That's really the question at hand here.
Nope.
And you say no because.
Didn't get an offer for a year.
So you're selling it for potentially three hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred?
If you sell it for that, will you make a profit?
No, we'll, we'll lose a little bit, but we're comfortable there. Just from like what we've paid down, I think we have like about two eighty or something left on it, so if you want to call it a profit, I don't know, I mean, we've, we've.
Yeah, well, then we get into the definition of what's a reasonable rate of return.
Well, you, you paid, how much did you pay for, two hundred and eighty thousand?
Yeah, we built it, so.
Well, I mean, you still.
Yeah, I would say we probably had, it prob, we probably originally had probably around three forty in it.
Three four, three hundred forty?
Yeah.
Not counting your sweat equity?
Oh, well, I would say there's a dollar value on that.
All right, Jody, have any questions?
I think we've covered it all.
All right. Do we, do we request? The, do we request the numbers for the, for the?
Building?
So you say you have three hundred and forty thousand dollars in that, in the building? Between what you paid for the property, and then what it cost to develop the, the property? And, and you're able to substantiate that?
Um, well, he just mentioned sweat equity, we, we as the two owners, like, have a substantial amount of that in it. So, well, what about?
Sweat equity doesn't count, I wish it did.
Yeah, it should, but, well, so, we do also have this current appraisal, which I don't know if it made it to you guys or not, because it, it sounds like you might not have it, because you didn't find those pictures. But we have the appraisal, which they did it three ways, one is cost to build, which came out at about three ninety-seven, so that's like, that's an outside opinion. So it's a three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar building.
So you got your price that you wanted at three twenty-two five hundred, you satisfied with that?
Well, given our situation, which is that our partner died, so we're, we're short, we're short one of our people. We're now in a situation where Tom's wife and myself are, are left with it, I moved out of the area. So, we want to do what's best for, for her, for me, and what's good for the city as well, you know, like to me, you couldn't ask for a better situation than to get a owner occupied in a, in a multifamily building. Or any building, really, I mean, the person's gonna be right there to attend this stuff on the spot, you know? I mean, we were pretty good about it when I was right here in Kingston, but now there's a little bit of delay when, when something comes up, I tend to try and reschedule it for the next day, or whenever is convenient, as opposed to being able to jump right on it.
But, but you also have to keep in mind, when you talk about the fact that this hypothetical next owner is gonna make it an owner occupied property, that the use variance would carry with the property forward. So you can't guarantee that every owner going forward is going to turn the property into an owner occupied property.
Can't even guarantee that they're gonna actually owner occupy.
Correct, so I'm saying.
That is.
It's like, so that's why we as the board have to consider, like, is there, with the current owner, is there financial hardship? Is this something that we have to do for the current owner, we can't speculate about unknowns.
Right.
We can only kind of work with the individuals who own the property now, and what their needs are.
We have to look, we have to look at your numbers.
Right, I understand.
And make that determination.
I mean, we do have signed contracts and stuff that state all of the things that you're asking about for the new owner, but if, if we aren't looking at that.
Oh, I mean, I understand, I'm, I'm not, not sympathetic to your situation, I just think that there, there has to be clarity over what the responsibility of the board is verse the sort of pickle you guys are, guys are in, that's all.
So, we want to focus more on making it, making it so that it can at least cover itself for us too, because I believe actually you mentioned, we're up against now added expense of having to have people that can attend to, let's say, a.
Correct, like what you would want to emphasize is why this property has become a financial hardship for you. And then, based on that, the board can make an educated decision.
Okay.
I think, I think we have the financial information that we need, basically they're operating on a six hundred dollar loss. You know, I failed on the other two items, but I don't want to fail on this one, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this property, thirty-nine forty-five Van Duzen Street? Okay, all right.
I just want to clarify one thing, you say we have the numbers, but the numbers would be, those numbers would be germane if we had an applicant that was telling us we're operating at a loss, and in order for us to get a reasonable rate of return, we need this new apartment. You know, with the presumption that they're continuing to live there, but they're not, they're, they're selling the building, and I think at this point, the question is is the sale of the building at three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars allowing them to get a reasonable rate of return? Because that's what's being presented.
Then we need other information on the
That's my point.
Building of the house. I mean, if, it, it's also contingent, this is, sale is contingent on whether or not you get the variance.
That's correct.
Correct.
So, I mean, there's a, there's a financial hardship there also to consider.
And for the record, I would like to state that the, the loan that the purchaser is getting is an owner occupied, it's a an FHA loan, and he has to live in the property.
Okay.
And he's also living in a property which is going into foreclosure from his landlord, so he's in a pickle as well. So there's a lot of moving parts in this.
Okay, I think we will discuss this and then make a decision. You're free to stay to hear what that decision is, or you'll receive a letter from Mr. Kitchen. No one wishes to speak, is anyone? Thank you, is there anyone that wanted to speak on Chapel Street, the fence? Or Trumper Avenue with the storage building? Just to go backwards a little, okay, great, so we're, we're narrowing this down to the last applicant, Richard. Okay. Thank you. Richard Baroneo and applicant Scott Dutton. Seven Burnett Street. Zone R one. Ward nine. Applicant is seeking area variance from four oh five attachment two colon two of the City of Kingston zoning ordinance for purpose of a side yard, side yard setback to construct a fourteen by twenty single car garage to the existing single family home. The, this is an example of the complexity of the current zoning law, normally the setbacks would be fifteen feet front, five side, thirty rear. Which probably wouldn't cause any issues. But then there's a footnote that this is a corner lot, so you need twenty-five feet on the side. And if I remember the application, there's eight feet four, eight, eight feet four inches on the side?
Mr. Chairman, that would be eight feet four after the addition of the garage, should the board grant the.
And you needed twenty-five with the complexity of the code and the footnotes and all. So, anything else you wanted to add on this?
There is, my name is Scott Dutton, I reside at nineteen Canfield Street in the City of Kingston, with me tonight is Richard Baroneo.
Yes, Richard Baroneo, seven Burnett Street in Kingston. All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I realize that I neglected to answer the five questions in the application, if you'd like me to answer them here tonight.
Oh, you mean on the criteria?
I'd be happy to do so.
I thought, I thought you had the answers in, on some of them that I saw going through it.
Well, if there are any questions, we're certainly here to address them.
Yes. I, I took a tour of the, of the site, and it's tight with the old Twoskill Firehouse, but there's enough room to get around that, and you're gonna demolish the porch, so that gives you the room to put the garage in.
That's, that's correct, and after we submitted the application, the adjacent property owner, Tom Pfeffer, issued a statement to this, to the board, I assume that that made it to all of the board members? Who's, who, that's the Twoskill? Yes, Tom Pfeffer is in support of this application.
Okay, I have that letter in here in my packet.
He and Mr. Baroneo met at the property, took tape measures, laid everything out, and he is satisfied and supportive of the variance request.
Yes, I can attest to that, I just need to find the letter. But I did have the letter, and I read it, and he, he does issue his support of the project. Any questions at all?
We trust that you can attest.
I will, trust that I will find it.
Okay.
I have a little paperwork today at tonight's meeting. Owen, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, this, the look I've got on it is, I gotta get. Okay. Let's go, let's turn around. There we go.
May I ask just one, one quick question?
Certainly.
How come there's no like, design for the garage?
Well.
We don't need to see that.
Because we haven't designed it yet, other than the footprint, which we're seeking the minimum variance necessary for fourteen foot wide by twenty feet deep. The structure would have to be constructive, non-combustible construction. Graphic standards recommends a minimum of twelve feet on the interior, so allowing for that.
So you're just going to follow sort of like what's in the codes already, I was only asking because we recently had a situation with a garage, and I just wanted to.
The property is in the Heritage Area Commission, so that, that body will have to review and approve the design for it.
Okay. No, that, that's great, though, I'm glad that you at least shared that information, thank you.
I was wondering if it was in the Heritage Area, thank you.
And in fairness to Richard, I thought it would be prudent to come before this board and either obtain the var. and either obtain the variance or not before making the investment in a whole, complete set of drawings. So it's safe to say that when the garage is completed, there won't be a dance hall on the second floor, right? That's correct. A single-story garage.
You who doubt, found the letter, March 4th. To whom it may concern, I am the adjoining property owner to Richard Barione, Baronea, who recently bought the house and property at 7 Burnett Street. I've owned the Twoskill Firehouse for 25 years, reviewed the plans for his proposed garage. I do not object to this project. I understand the issues of setbacks. Maybe we ought to get him on the board. He understands the issues of setbacks there. I like that, because I don't, I certainly don't all the time. But I support this project, encourage the zoning board to approve it as well. Thank you, Tom Pfeffer, 3 Dunn Street, Twoskill Firehouse. Okay. Ye who have little faith. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm good.
Ari?
I weigh in.
Steve, did you have something?
I just, I did want to weigh in. From the building department's standpoint, we are a little concerned with the, you know, the garage placement with respect to how close it is to the sidewalk. We, we do get a number of complaints that, for similar situations in the city where the homeowner does pull up to park and leave the car outside of the, front of the park, outside of the front of the garage, and it impedes the sidewalk. Correct. So that, that kind of is a concern of ours.
Well, how was the distance?
Mr. Knox, have you, had you had the opportunity to visit the, the site?
I, I did not get an opportunity.
Okay. I, I can describe for the board, and I believe the chairman has been to the site to see that it's sort of dug into the hill there, and the grade goes up, and there's a substantial tree that exists behind the, the building.
I can attest to that substantial tree.
Yeah.
About 100 years old, it looks like. That's the reason why it can't go back further. What's the distance between the, the front of the garage and
Richard has just advised that he's, he's laid it out such that it's, would be 10 feet from the property line to the front of the, the garage.
And the requirement's 15?
What's that? On the property? Right. Mr. Cafferty's asking if we can slide this back five feet, which would allow for a normal car to Right, to fit in front of the garage without stretching out over the Right. And I, I think with a little bit of excavation and regrading and maybe a small retaining wall, we could, we could make that happen. So we'd certainly be happy to make that a stipulation of the board's decision. Would that solve your problems?
That would be fantastic, yeah.
Would that, that isn't going to require any front setback variance then? Be 15 feet, as I understood it? What's the distance going to be from the front of the garage to the
15.
Yeah, so you don't need a, you just need the side, side setback variance.
Side yard setback is what they need the area variance for.
Yeah, but they would have needed it for the front if they didn't move it back. As required is 15 feet. Okay, I don't have any questions. Anyone else have questions? All right, we'll discuss it. Given opportunity, anyone have any comment on this particular project?
Thank you, members of the board.
We'll discuss it, and you can stay and hear the decision or
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for everything.